All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being patient in this room up here. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting, March 10th. We'll try to get to things as quickly as possible. I think we have -- we don't have any bills today, right?
We do.
We do?
This is actually four. It's a peer review. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay, this is actually, this is --
Do we have --
That's it, right?
That's it.
Okay. So this is just a reimbursement, actually, for Nicole for postcards that we did for an info session that we're going to be hosting. I'm sorry. This is actually the initial, it wasn't -- It is for the postcards that we sent out as of, to the property owners and businesses within the Village Center to give them a heads-up of the proposed changes.
Okay. And it's for $18.99, it looks like, here.
I didn't put the town.
Okay. So I'll pass this around, and we have two sets of minutes as well, February 11th and We'll start with the 11th. Does anybody have any changes on these, corrections? I'll try to speak up for everybody. My throat's a little -- I'm not sick, don't worry. I wouldn't have come, I wouldn't do that to you. Anyone with changes on this, February 11th minutes?
Make motion to accept the minutes of February 11th.
Second.
Make motion in a second. Any further comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying?
Oh.
Two fine gentlemen.
Fine gentleman. Ish. All right. We have two abstentions. You got that, Nicole? All right, there's a second set of minutes from February 27th. Do we have any, any changes on this here?
Did you fill in that comment on the executive session?
That's all, I was just gonna ask you.
I haven't heard that from me, so you guys might want to hold off on that.
Okay.
I sent a tour, and I did send a tour and asked her to weigh in on that, so.
The wording was, was right on the agenda. The wording for that motion was right on the agenda. The only difference was that we were gonna -- We tended to close the meeting.
If you know, I should get it done before it's up to you.
I'm okay holding it till you hear back from me for that. I'm 99% sure it was on the agenda there.
Okay. I just had to table that.
So, is everybody okay tabling these? All right. And has everyone had a chance to look at the invoice there?
Has it come this way?
Oh, make a clear line.
It's coming this way, let's go around this side.
$18?
$18.99. Yeah, it's for postcards.
I can do the --
Oh, sorry.
Should we all sit with these? Or this?
Motion approved with the last minute.
Okay. Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. All right.
I just, I'm not too sure if you have the time.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving right along. We have a couple of public hearings tonight that have been continued. I'm just gonna skip to C. South Worcester Street, just because they've requested a continuance until the April meeting. I don't know where Paul went, but he can explain the reasoning on that.
I believe he's getting more to see, so that's --
Okay. Oh, here we go.
Waiting River Estates.
Waiting River Estates. Oh, the, so it's SP, excuse me, SP 490.
Right, you'll see in your packet, there was a request yesterday from MBL Land Development Permit requesting that we schedule their meeting through, they said April 14th, but you don't have a meeting scheduled for April 14th. And it's primarily because they're still working on stormwater and traffic. They haven't completed the review, nor has that, has their work on to the peer reviewers. And they're also going through Conservation Commission. They're scheduled to go there April 13th.
Okay. So what do we have for April? We have --
The 7th. 7th and the 28th. And keep in mind, that's the beginning of the public hearings on the zoning bylaw changes.
All right, we'll figure out.
So our question, so our decisions are either before they hear from, they talk to Conservation, or while we're doing the bylaws?
Two options.
Those are the two options, though.
If we do it before they've talked to Conservation, we're just gonna ask them to come back. That's just my experience here so far, so, I mean, I would say the 28th is probably better. What are your thoughts?
Are we gonna have a full agenda, to Paul's point, leading up to the town meeting? I think we should just wait until May.
Yeah.
Because we need to get the town meeting.
Can, I mean, we have a -- We have a May 5th, but we would need to look at whether or not they'd have to, you know, request a continuance, I mean, request an extension of the time before you issue, you know, the decision.
Either that, or we can put it off for the 7th, and then continue it again further to May at that point.
April 7th.
April 7th, yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe that would, that might be my preference, to do it that way, and then they'll talk to us, we can walk through anything that's relevant, maybe just to us. And then, as they hear from Conservation, we can know whether it makes sense to try and look at it in April or May. We'll have time to vote.
Yeah, just another thought on that would, is since April 7th will be the first time hearing, you know, the public hearing on the zoning bylaw changes for Village Center and Marijuana. Those will probably be the length, that'll, those two discussions could potentially be lengthy. I would expect certain marijuana ones to be 28th.
So you think the 28th would be less crowded?
Hopefully, hopefully whatever issues come about at that meeting will be discussed, and it'll be an opportunity to just focus on those changes. Hopefully it'll be less, but it doesn't always work out that way.
Yeah, right, brings me to what I was gonna talk about at the end of the night, is we're gonna have to add a meeting or two in here at some point, so just, keep that in the back of your head.
So if we vote for a continuance, and we set the date, are we allowed to change that date, or does the applicant have to change it?
We still, we still have to continue, we, if they ask to continue it further, then we would still have to have it on the agenda.
No, I understand, but like, if we set it for April 28th, and then we find that due to rollover from the 7th, we just can't fit it in, are we allowed to change the date ourself after voting on it, the continuance? That's my concern, is that we, although even the 28th meeting, and we can't back out of it at that point, once we vote to continue to a certain date.
Well, you could always ask the applicant to agree to continue it. Obviously, you'd have to take it up since it's, it would continue it to a date certain, you'd have to open it, and then determine if you wanted to hear it that night. But we'll need to, we'll need to check the dates for --
How do you typically set the agendas? First come, first served, or do you prioritize them?
Well, no, we are obligated to, within a certain period of time, after we've stamped in an application, to get it on the agenda, so.
Right. But if we already know possibly what's on the agenda for that night, and then we move them there, does that order, right and change? Because if they're at the end of that, and there's those two bylaw discussions, the likelihood that they want to stay there is probably not very good.
Well, we'll put it together, but obviously, the board can decide how it takes it that night. So usually what we do is continued items go first, and then new items would come after that. But that'll be at the board's discretion, how they want to take the items up.
Well, my, my point is that the priority, obviously, we all agree, needs to be the town meeting articles, and getting them through in a timely manner. So if this impedes that ability, then that's my concern.
I believe, once we put it to the date, we have to have it on that date, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are able to continue it at that date, so as long as we open it and then continue it.
I think that explains why we're putting it on the 7th, and then have an open dialogue with the applicant in terms of what we're talking, what we're thinking the agenda looks like, and also that they're going through for Conservation. If we're adding a meeting in there, or we have some additional --
Do we know if they're in on Conservation's agenda in the next meeting?
They are.
On the 13th?
They are, on the 13th. They've been to, they've been to Conservation Commission already.
Okay.
I should point out, too, that we also have a site plan from Condyne that I believe we've scheduled for the end of this month.
10 Commerce.
10 Commerce Way is in, it's an expansion of the existing T-Mobile site.
Okay.
So we always try to get the, any application we receive, to get them to the next available that they can, because we have noticing requirements, so usually it's three weeks from receipt of the applicant, or the acceptance of the application.
I'm fine with putting it on the April 7th meeting, as long as we don't put it at the top of the agenda. I'd prefer to put it at the end of the agenda, so that we do our priority items first for the town meeting.
Yeah, I could, I'd be okay with that. As would I.
Similar.
Wait, you're saying April 7th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, so all in favor of continuing the SP 490, 100 West Worcester Street, to the April 7th meeting?
Aye.
I am opposed. All right. Now, I know it's on the bottom of the agenda here, the surety release. This is something that was on the last meeting, so this should be fairly quick. I know, are there people here that were here? Okay. So it's, it's my understanding, as the applicant commented on this as well, is that there was some concern about the phthalates and the connectivity. That has nothing to do with the surety release. So Paul, if you want to go over that?
Sure. And I was hoping as well, after the meeting, or we can continue this, but, so I did a lot of research into this, and I'm glad you brought this up, but back in, when this subdivision was approved back in 99, the town, in this decision, and it did this in a few others, it required the developer to put in water lines, even though there was no plan to connect them. So the lines were in the ground, and through some documents that I found, you know, the planning board back in 2001 agreed to a surety amount, which included, it was about $98,000, which included what they called municipal services, which I would assume means the water lines. But again, we know the lines are in the ground, that's been confirmed by the Water and Sewer Department and the Fire Department. And then, I think it was 2007, we released, the planning board agreed to release the surety for that $98,000 for what it said, construction of the road and municipal services. Also, as part of the correspondence, the $5,000 that's being asked to be released was held back about in the mid-2000s, because not all of the lots had been built, and there was concern that as construction happened, there would be some damage to the roadway. So, so that $5,000 was held specifically for the release of it, of funds for the completion of those lots, or the, to ensure that money was still available to fix if the curb, you know, the granite curbs were damaged. And a few months ago, the highway superintendent went out there and signed off on it to say it's okay. So I also reached out to the Water and Sewer Department and the Fire Department, and you'll see, there was a, and I could get all of this to you, all of this information, I just got some of it later today, but you'll see a handout from Frank Forney, or the superintendent, and he also confirmed that 20 years ago, we had a practice of other departments and other boards requiring infrastructure to be put in the ground, even though the Water Department had, did not have any plans to connect it. It also goes into talking about how this was never even inspected. The water lines were never inspected, they'd never been inspected, so they're concerned that, not only with bacteria buildup, but they don't even know if you, once you add pressure to the lines, what could happen to the pipes themselves, so, so they were, they're concerned about connecting this infrastructure, for the reasons spelled out in here, that Frank can certainly elaborate on better than I can. They were also concerned about, you know, the maintenance of, well, anyway, I'm going around here, but one of the things that, that Frank mentioned was, you know, these roads, this situation, I guess it's, it's not an accepted road, according to this information, and that if it's not, then the town would not go in and do the improvements, but they recommend having an association for the, you know, for the private road through the subdivision, hire a contractor to have the hydrants removed, to avoid the confusion. But with that, the Fire Department knows about these hydrants, and in fact, there are a few others around the town that are in the same situation. The Fire Department knows which ones are active and the handful that are not active. But one of the things I would suggest, and I'd like to work with you to just set up some meeting with the Fire Department, because I know your concerns are about fire suppression, and, you know, certainly could recommend talking to the Water and Sewer Department about this as well, but, you know, the Water Department essentially saying they're not, they don't have the, well, that they would not consider this as a project to connect to the, to the system.
So they, was not accepted as a public road?
That's my understanding, and I know they plow them now.
The road has been accepted.
The road has been accepted.
It has been.
So, yeah, okay. For, for our purposes, as far as releasing the surety and the peer review release, because this was brought up before, we wanted to make sure we got, we got you answers for it, so I definitely think it's a good idea to work with Paul and figure this out in greater detail, because something doesn't sound right to me in it, too, so.
There is still some damage to the road with all the trucks going back and forth, so before you release the light, the oil, the final inspection has to be done, because some of the sores are starting to cave in, the cars.
So it's my understanding the highway superintendent's already looked at it and signed off on it, what, three weeks ago? A week prior to the last meeting?
Yeah, but, yeah, I have, there's an email from --
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
He emailed me, well, this was back in November.
What was part of the subdivision plan? What requirements did the developer have in terms of installing operable hydrants?
Well, it, well, it, all it said, and --
They were going to be operable.
Well, it just said they had to install, but what it said was municipal services. I didn't see anything in the decision, and I posted the decision on Dropbox. Again, that's something I'll, I'll give to you as well.
The whole thing is strange to me, and the fact that it's been 20 years, I mean, I wouldn't connect them anyways at this point, and I think that's what they're saying.
Well, it was a precedent.
For our purposes, to move along this meeting, I think we need to decide if we're gonna release the surety or not. As far as I understand, the surety is only based on the road and repairs to it. I definitely don't want to let that go without an answer, as far as the hydrants, which is why I think it's a good idea to work with Paul and figure that out.
Yeah, we'd like to obviously address those concerns.
Would it be possible to get a few of the people responsible for these parts of the organization here to just talk about it openly together? Like someone from Water, Sewer, maybe the town manager?
Yeah, well, just so we can openly have a discussion of what really is going on.
Looks like something's been dropped. I don't know by who, but I don't, it's certainly not the owners of these properties.
Right.
And so just to say, well, technically, this has been signed off, and this has been signed off, I don't know who signed off, and what it was signed off for, but I just want to make sure that there's a problem. If there's a problem, it was supposed to be fixed by somebody on this side of the fence, or the developer, that we don't say, go, go talk to the Water Department, because they're gonna be, they have nothing, they have no cloud to do that with. And so I just want to, I think what you're saying is, let's find out what the status is. I understand that you can disinfect the line, you can pressure treat it, that, you know, that's done all the time. So I'm not sure what this dry hydrant is supposed to be, whether it was intended as a dry hydrant, and if it's dry hydrant, I'm assuming it should be in a position to be activated at some point, it's not just there as a, as a monument. So I'm really not clear about what that is. I understand it's not a lot of money.
I, I think, I think all of those need answers. I think that there's something happened somewhere, and I think we need to get to the answers for that, but I think at this point, we need to focus on our agenda, and I think Paul can handle this offline and update us as, as a board when he finds the solution.
Could we maybe not do it offline, and maybe take an action that after the town meeting, maybe we circle back and get representatives from each of those boards here, so we can do it openly?
Yeah, I, I hope at that point there is an answer. And, yeah, absolutely.
It would just be good, because I have a lot of questions, and I can read, you know, the content provided, I understand the intent there, but I'd like to ask a few questions a little bit deeper, to understand where the defect was. Because if there's something we can do as a board for future preventative measures of this.
And not make a mistake in the future, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to ask two quick questions. I assume you folks are on well water?
Right.
Is there, and I don't know Burt Street well enough to know whether there's water on Burt Street.
Yes.
All right, so it's, which is curious to me, why the developer wouldn't have been required to make a connection. I don't know how much of Fuller, I don't know Fuller well enough, I, I'm only assuming at this point, there were a couple houses already on Fuller, and this was an extension of Fuller?
Well, Fuller has about 12 homes on it.
Was, was that all part of the original subdivision?
Well, homes were added after the subdivision started.
Right, but what I'm saying --
Start from scratch, or was there something there already?
Was this developed?
It's brand new development.
So I don't understand why it wouldn't have been a requirement, so.
Yeah. My two main concerns are that, one, you know, if there is a fire, there's a plan. That's my biggest concern, with the Fire Department. No, I, I believe, yeah, I don't think, I don't think sure, I think there is a plan. I don't think the Fire Chief would let that go without any, any plan. But also that we don't make that mistake in the future, or we can prevent it in the future, so. But as far as the surety and the peer review release, that's just for the road and the construction of the road. And we had signed off on that from the Highway Department. Yeah, and the Highway Department signed off that it's good to release.
Again, I wasn't around back when this was approved, I can't imagine that anyone could logically approve a subdivision, if in fact, this entire Fuller Drive was a one subdivision, one developer, and have them put in, I can perhaps see dry hydrants up into a certain point, and then when it reached 50% development, and, to be candid, I don't even know why you folks are on well water. If these folks were required to run phthalates up the road, that implies municipal water.
Right.
None of this is making any sense to me, and I'm not prepared, and I don't think anyone should be in a real rush after 20 years to get their surety back. Until we have a better, at least I have a better handle on, on this, I'm not prepared to release surety, but.
Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to either table it or approve it, so.
I'll move that the surety release --
Or any other motion you'd like to.
Yeah, I'll move that the surety release be tabled until such time as we have more information upon which to make a decision.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second to table the surety and the, surety and the peer review release?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for being patient. Cumberland Farms, you've been very patient, so. We're gonna continue the public hearing of SP 466 and SP 491, 60 West Main Street, Cumberland Farms.
Sure.
We have the applicant here.
Where should this stand?
That's a great question.
Where would you like the applicant to be?
Yeah. Probably, maybe up here.
Go mobile, man, go mobile.
We can do whatever you want. I mean, there's probably more audio than visual this time, so I guess for the record, good evening. Tom Brady, attorney of Vic and Wilson, and I am here on behalf of Cumberland Farms in this application for slightly improved approval, special permit for gas station use in the Village Commercial zoning district, special permit for gas station use in the Water Resource Protection District Zone 3, and so the recently amended zoning bylaw, and then also special permit for the electronic message center side. So with me this evening, I've got Tracy Roll, who's the developer, I've got John Marchand, our civil engineer. Last, we were here in December. I think we checked off a lot of the boxes, the site, the architecture, traffic, underground storage tanks, and I think the last piece that we needed to address was stormwater. There were some iterations back and forth between your peer reviewer, Mr. Chessia, who's here this evening, and our civil engineer, John Marchand. So I'm happy to get into it, but if, if it's pleasing to the chair, we can have the peer reviewers speak, or our engineers speak, and then what we also did was, I had provided you a letter back November 26th of last year, which identified the changes that were made prior to that date, you know, from the initial application back in maybe May or June, whenever that was. And then just recently, last week, I provided an additional update via email to Paul, so that you see everything that we've done since that December meeting, and really, this was, those were things that we discussed after December meeting, just that they turned it to plan form, so we just wanted to call it out, so you knew what changes had been made. I know that a couple of the Planning Board members had asked, so, you know, with that, it's whatever the chair wants.
All right, I think it might go smoother if we go through the, the peer review first, and then answer any of the questions in between.
That's my recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, John Chessia, Chessia Consulting, I'm going over to the recordings. So basically, there were a couple of outstanding issues last time, with some inconsistencies within their calculations that were addressed, and they're pretty much all set, there's a couple of things, I just, I'll just go over what was changed, so you get it, what had to happen, and there's maybe one or two things that probably should be edited on the final plans, that could be a condition that's really minor stuff. There was, basically, they did some testing in the field to determine how quickly water would drain into the ground, so they tested how fast it would drain with a test that's allowed by DEP. It's different than a BURC test, it's a little more detailed, a little more precise, I guess. And they came up with a little bit faster rates than they were using, but they initially used the raw rate, and you're supposed to, when you do that, take only a 50% of it, so the safety factor. So when you do a test, you assume that the thing's gonna clog up a little bit. They didn't do that, but they fixed it, and it was all set relative to that. They did a mounting analysis underneath the systems, because they don't have enough separation from groundwater. The mound calculations are based on all the water that soaks into the ground in a hundred year storm, and it will come up underneath, and what happens is the waters in the basin or in the subsurface system, groundwater's down here, at some point in time, they merge together, and it creates a calculation of a mound. The mound calculations are okay, they, water does enter the bottom of the basin, which of course is already in the basin, but it doesn't extend so far out that it would break out to the surface at another location, or something like that. There is a difference on the plan for the subsurface system, that the invert of the pipe coming out of it in the cowl is different from the invert on the plan, so that's something that should just get changed on the plan, should go with the cowl set. There's another invert for the overflow spillway in the open basin. However, the 100-year storm never gets up to the elevation, so it doesn't even really matter. The calculation had it like a half a foot higher than the plan, but the results are such that it would never reach it, so it doesn't even have to be changed, but I just pointed it out, issue that was there. So they meet that standard, so they, you know, the first standard, standard one is erosion treatment, no untreated runoff and no erosion from the site. There is really no discharge from the site, everything's contained in a 100-year storm, so there wouldn't be any erosion, because it's up there in the road. Everything runs through various treatment systems. The recharge is almost all of the storms are recharged, with the exception of a very small area around the perimeter that smokes out, that's mostly lawn, so they exceed what's required to recharge. The treatment, there were some questions about that initially, but they addressed all of those. They have the oil grid separated that's required, they have a valve to shut it off, this is spilled with the gas. that the invert of the pipe coming out of it in the cowl is different from the invert on the plan. So, that's something that should just get changed on the plan, should go with the cowl set. There's another invert for the overflow spillway in the open basin. However, the hundred-year storm never gets up to the elevation, so it doesn't even really matter. The calculation had it like a half a foot higher than the plan, but the results are such that it would never reach it, so it doesn't even have to be changed. But I just pointed it out, issue that was there. So, they meet that standard, so they, you know, the first standard, standard one is erosion treatment. No untreated runoff and no erosion from the site. There is really no discharge from the site. Everything's contained in a hundred-year storm. So, there wouldn't be any erosion because it's up there on the road. Everything runs through various treatment systems. The recharge is almost all of the storms are recharged, with the exception of a very small area around the perimeter that smokes out, that's mostly lawn. So, they exceed what's required to recharge. The treatment, there were some questions about that initially, but they addressed all of those. They have the oil grip separated that's required. They have a valve to shut it off if there's a spill with the gas tank. So, that's all set. I do recommend that you include a condition that they prepare and submit the stormwater pollution prevention plan to you for review before. That's been sort of tabled until everything is approved if that happens, and then they'll develop that afterwards. And I also recommend there's a condition that you get a standalone operation and maintenance plan. Usually what happens after this project is built, there might be some job drawings for certain structures that are put in, probably like a valve and things like that, that would go into the binder, and that's your operation and maintenance plan, the plan of the site, shelter, snow goes, all that stuff. And then, I recommend you have a condition that the board get a copy of that and that be submitted at the end as well. And that's pretty much it. If you have questions, of course, feel free.
Anyone have questions?
Has the applicant approved, agreed to the conditions you noted, just the market conditions?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay.
The applicant want to respond to any of these, or go through anything?
No, I think, no, I think we're good.
Is there any question in the audience on this? I know it's up on the screen behind you, which is very convenient, I'm sure. What we're going through there. Alright, how about further questions in general from the board?
I had just two questions. One is, I know it's not part of your project, but I'm just curious, is there any plans for electric charging stations at this facility?
Good question. I don't believe there are any plans at this time for electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay, I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, I don't even know how that would operate. And then the other thing is, I've seen some articles on gas vapor releasing, and I don't, I, looking at these plans, I couldn't tell if there's any stacks or anything to release those vapors?
Vents?
Yes.
Yeah, so there are a couple of vents connected to the underground storage tanks. So, we received prior to, when we were supposed to meet the last time, I think it was an article that you had pulled up of, there were maybe a couple of instances where there was concern over that vent thing, and it looked like from earlier stations. So, I reached out to Bob Caluccio, who you probably all remember, underground storage tank, I'll call him an expert. And he said the release of gas vapors will be minimized or eliminated using a stage one vapor recovery design and onboard vapor recovery. So, I think he had talked about that during his presentation. You know, when the tank comes and drops fuel, it actually gets, any of the fumes goes back into the truck, and so it doesn't go out into the, into the environment.
My understanding is stage one is dealing with the pumps themselves.
Okay.
But the tanks themselves create a vapor, and that vapor gets released not just from the filling of the tanks, but as a normal process, you have gas, gasoline that sends off vapors. And I believe there usually are gas vapor release stacks to release that from the tanks, so the tanks don't create that gas and it gets built up. I'm just assuming there should be some here, and I'm not sure where they are and what's being sent out to those stacks, those stacks.
Sure, so the stacks are on the, I think it's the eastern part of the site, right at the edge of the parking area. If you've got your plan in front of you, I can probably point out exactly where it is. You go probably 4.0. So, they're going to be, what is next? Right here, like the draw. So, those vents are right here. Can I hold it up just a second, show you that, so you don't mind? So, they're just, they're tucked right here, a couple of vents. And when I sent Bob the information that Paul had sent along, his response was what I just articulated to everybody, that he thinks that through the stage one and the, what else did he say, onboard vapor recovery, he said that the release of gas vapors will be minimized or eliminated. So, I'm not the expert on it, so I've got to kind of defer to him.
Because I think that article that I sent you also referenced the California Air Resource Board that says based on cancer recommendations that schools, daycare centers, and other sensitive land use should not be located within 300 feet of any large gas station. I'm just concerned with, we talk about benzene, I'm not sure what comes up in those gases that are being released. And they're being released clearly within 300 feet of both the residential residents and in addition to the, to the school property. And I'm just raising that as a concern for me. And you don't know what's released in those?
No, but I have to imagine that if it's so bad, then gas stations wouldn't be allowed. I mean, these are really highly regulated, it's a really highly regulated industry. I mean, you've got the state fire marshal looking at it, the DEP looking at it, and so, and also I think you've seen through the presentation from Cumberland Farms and Bob Caluccio, they go through the extra steps to make sure that it is not unsafe for the environment. So, I can't give you a specific answer, but it's just from everything else that I've been able to glean.
But you are within 300 feet of, those stacks would be within 300 feet of the residence and the, the school property that's adjacent to it?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had is, I think you talked about fencing along two sides of it. Was there going to be fencing along the school side as well?
I think we were in vegetation along that side. John, do you remember?
Yeah, we did. We had fencing along-
I thought there was fence in vegetation.
Yeah, all three sides.
There's both.
On all three sides?
And then the chain link fencing.
So, yeah, so fencing along the three sides, obviously not the front, and then there's chain link fencing around that basin. And I think what we've talked about is, in hearing last time, the, maybe the white vinyl wasn't the most appealing. I think we had proposed a clay vinyl, clay colored vinyl that I provided to Paul the picture of, and I don't know if that made it into your packets.
Says classic clay on the drawing.
Yeah, that's it. So, if you want to pass it around, you can see the one that's, sorry, I only have one, but. You know, we talked about doing wood, just because it was a different material, but I think the maintenance of that, it can fall into disrepair a lot quicker. And so, we thought that on balance, the vinyl, non-white, classic clay would be aesthetically pleasing and then also functional.
Anyone else on the board with questions?
I had, and I don't know whether I misheard you, Mr. Reedy. Did you say you're applying for an electronic message board as well?
Yeah, so, in conversations with the building commissioner, those price cabinets were deemed to be potentially an electronic message center, so we're just putting an abundance of caution. That's, but it's just for the prices. It's not like milk, $2.
Yeah, because some of your stores do have-
They have, they're almost controlling electronics. This is only for those price cabinets.
Is this an additional special permit? You mentioned three?
Yes, so those are-
When was that filed? Is that filed recently? I don't know if you've seen-
For the, for the electronic message thing?
Yeah, I thought they-
That was the original, that was the, one of the original applications. And also keep in mind, they received a variance approval from the zoning board of appeals late last year on-
Early, yes.
That's some monuments, I think.
Oh, okay, seems so. Anyway, but that dealt with the signs, the size of the signs, and there was a, there was, there was something in there about the EMC, but I think that was the delay that they wouldn't-
Yeah, so we, it says 10-second delay. We asked for eight seconds, because that's what Cumberland has found is the optimal time, and they said, you really need it, and so we talked about it, and we said we can live with the 10 seconds. So, that's what your bylaw provides, so they ultimately denied the variance as to that, from 10 seconds to eight seconds. But it was more of an agreement than I would say a denial.
From a procedural perspective, have we had that, that permit on the agenda at all, and do we need to?
That's been.
Well, just from the agenda, this one is underground care storage and-
Yeah, there's only two special permits as well.
I'm just-
Yeah, I mean, I can confirm they submitted the original application.
I just don't know which number would match up to it, to make sure that we're-
It's, the sign would be under 486. 491 was specifically the new application that came in after town meeting for allowing a gas station in zone three.
So, the sign would be part of 486?
Yes.
But, I mean, I don't think it's going to come as any surprise. One of the concerns I have, given location, given the line of sight, I've always had a little bit of concern. Now, withstanding that these EDA may have approved in terms of size, I have a concern with the size of the sign. Yeah, I want it to be functional for you, I want it to do its job, but you may or may not recall that I had mentioned one of the newest Cumberland Farms built at Hart's Corner in Taunton. That sign is 12 by 8.
12 feet tall, yeah, 8 by, I think 56 square feet altogether.
Yeah, I didn't do the math.
This one's 64 square feet altogether, so it's 42 and 24. The Cumberland Farms part is 24 square feet. And then, the total of the price cabinet is the 42 square feet, so for a total of 64 square feet. And it's 6 feet wide.
Yeah, and your competition up the street has a sign that's 10 by 4. Ordinarily, again, if this was someplace else, and I didn't measure the 1-on-140, but I'm guessing, just when I drove by, it's smaller than this. Again, I don't think you need a sign, given its location, that is, is this large, and I'm concerned with how it fits into the neighborhood. I saw five wanted to see it pared down. It still serves your purpose. You're going to have a 60-foot canopy over gas, gas pumps that, you know, no one is going to be unaware of what is going on there. And again, the price would be clearly visible by anyone driving up and down at a 12-foot height, and-
So, you're thinking 12 feet high instead of the 14 foot, seven inches?
I mean, to be candid, I just soon see it's smaller, but I think, just to be consistent with the argument I made originally, the Hart's Corner is 12 by 8, and it's a much busier location than the mess in terms of traffic.
Okay, we can do that.
Joe, is there any issue with the visibility under the sign? Can I see through the sign for Paul's?
Well, it is, that is, that's not built, that's a clear-
I know, they're only about two feet, is that-
Oh, but it's, it's set back.
It's 10 feet set back.
Yeah, so that's not going to be an issue.
As far as, if I can read it now.
I hear where it was.
On a 4.0, that has a dimension to the curb from the pylon.
So, it's from the property line, it's set back 10.1 feet, and that's the property line, and then outside of the property line, you still have, there's like a little strip of grass and probably a 5.5 foot wide sidewalk, so at least 15 feet from the traveled way at that point. Plus, for those vehicles that are actually exiting the site in that driveway, if you look at where the road curvature is, the road's actually set out even more as you start to travel in that, or if you're looking east. So, we think it's, we would suggest that it's set back far enough.
So, just looking a little bit forward and trying to get ahead of things, your intention is to request to close it out tonight?
We love that. Not that we don't like seeing you, but-
If we were to do that, we would need, it would be a condition as far as the sign.
That's fine.
Because I agree with Joe on this, too.
12 foot, sure. And so, what we could do, and I haven't seen any other decisions, but we could either submit it to Paul prior to receipt of a building permit, or just when we go for a building permit, make sure that it-
It's a length issue?
Yeah, however, you want it.
Just like in confirm, it's 12 by 8? Is that Joe, because you had said that-
12 by 8 is the size of the one at Hart's Corner.
Your focus primarily on the height of the-
Right.
Okay. So, the width?
The width, I'm okay with.
So, can we, what were you thinking in terms of the width then?
Unchanged.
Unchanged, okay.
Yeah, if we close it out, we can't add any new information, so we'd have to figure that out tonight.
Sure.
We're still talking about 2.7, 2.7 inches off the pole.
Right, so we'll take 2 feet, 7 inches off the top, leave it at 12 feet. I guess my only, if we went to 8 feet, it may, so right now, if you're looking at the sign, you'll see the length of that price cabinet if you take, I just don't know how the mechanics work out in the field. They would want to increase it by 2 feet, so then those price cabinets from going like this shrink a little bit, and it might look more proportional. I just don't know aesthetically. Going from 14, 7 down to 12, if we keep all the other, keep all the other dimensions the same, it just won't look proportional, so.
Squish down.
Right, right.
So, we would say just an axiom I, an axiom I didn't win.
We would prefer that.
Any further questions from the board here?
Yeah, I have another one, if you don't mind. You've indicated that you, your desire was to have this station open 24/7. There are residents on both sides of this operation, and I'm not really comfortable with that. I would ask you, if it were not 24/7, what kind of hours have you typically gone with if it's not 24/7?
So, I think this one would have to be 24/7. So, I'll end stop there. I will say that at other sites, they have gone 5:00 AM to midnight. That's typically, if it's not 24 hours, obviously depending upon the market, what they see, what they expect, that's where they would go to. So, this is one that, and Speedway right down the street is 24 hours.
Alright, anyone else on the board? I'm trying to remember, do we have any conditions as far as light or noise after certain hours? Trying to remember back to our discussions.
So, we talked about 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I think those are the only hours that we would have any audio or audible advertisements or anything outside, and then no reverse gear alarms outside of those hours either, so not before 6:00 or after 9:00.
Any lighting modifications during the overnight?
No, I think we want to keep, I mean, it's one of those things where if it, if it's, we don't think it's going to be an issue. The lights are all downcast, they're focused primarily under the canopy. If it turns out to be an issue, talk to us, because we don't want to be a nuisance to the neighbors. I think it's-
We'll definitely condition that.
Yeah, and it's those late night hours, that's going to, that's going to be the issue, where, you know, people are out there taking their money out, putting it into the machines. We want to make sure that it's appropriately lit, so that it's safe. So, I think the, the lights within the sign actually adjust, so they'll become dimmer at night, because they don't need to be as bright during, when the sun's out, they'll actually be brighter, but they're automatically adjusted.
Did you also condition some delivery times as well?
I don't know that we conditioned the delivery times.
That it would be-
Well, we haven't set the conditions yet, so-
No, I thought there was some discussion.
We did discuss it, yeah.
Yeah, there was some discussion. I thought they did, they did agree to deliver the deliveries to a certain times that wouldn't be in the middle of the night.
So, probably we could do the same 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's, that's fine for deliveries, no reverse gear alarms.
What about the air compressor station?
Oh, I think we talked about, sorry.
We talked a lot about it.
We talked about a lot, yeah.
It's so long ago.
Trying to remember. Yeah, I think we can, I think we talked about, we could turn that off. Yeah, so we could do the same 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I'm trying to remember. Sorry.
Unless there's more from the board, I'm going to open up the questions from the audience. Anyone on the board have anything else?
Can I just add, just looking at, this is a map from their set, it's an architect, it's an illumination map, and according to this, it's showing that there's no illumination on the rear property lines. It's indicating zero, which are-
Oh, it is, it is that.
10.0?
Well, I just have to look to it and find it, so.
Yeah, 10.0.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I've lost it. Now it's telling me stormwater report somehow, okay. Anyway, so that map was showing that it's all around the property lines that it's at zero, which-
Well, where's that measurement taken? At ground level? Of course, there's a fence in the lab.
There will be a fence.
Right, that's why it's zero.
That's calculation, yeah. That's calculating a grade.
Is it? Yeah.
According to the chart that I'm reading.
So small.
Yeah, that's, it's good to see.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, anyone in the audience? Just, I'm sorry, just say your name again.
From a safety standpoint, the delivery of fuel during times when schools have been coming in session in the morning and leaving to park in the afternoon, is that a safe time to deliver when, when kids arrive in school, also all traffic from high school and middle school?
That's a good question.
Sure, so, part of the balance, to the chair, part of the balance that we're trying to strike here is to not have those deliveries exist outside of the hours that we just discussed. I think, you know, if they could do it at 4:00 or 5:00 a.m., then we're not even talking about the school being in session, but understanding that between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., Cumberland Farms is also cognizant of their business, and they're not about to get a tanker truck in that parking lot where it's going to impede site circulation during those hours when, I think, what you heard from the traffic report, those are probably the busiest, is, you know, is 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. during that hour, and probably that whole, you know, morning and then afternoon commute. So, we don't, I don't anticipate that they would do it just from an operational standpoint.
Anyone else with questions?
Sue Weaver, 16th Seminary Way. I have an issue with 6:00 a.m., especially on the weekends. My bedroom is right, actually, all three of the bedrooms face the property of Cumberland Farms. They're all on that site, facing the site. At 6:00 a.m., I will tell you already, with the property being used for whatever they're doing, sewer, whatever, it's been a nightmare, and 24 hours, I have a very big issue with. And I realize that Hess's 24 hours, but they also close their doors, and they have a window that opens and closes for people to pay for gas, and/or whatever convenience from behind the counter. So, those are my big concerns, are just the hours and the time of deliveries, because 6:00 a.m. of a truck beeping right outside my bedroom window is not going to be an enjoyable experience.
Sharon, 14th Seminary Way, second of all of that. My bedroom faces that, too. The mornings in the last month have been horrible with the state being going on for the sewer work, that it's, the beeping starts at 6:30 every day. And I know we have a noise law in this town, so we go with the state, but 24 hours, it's just, I don't know how many they're going to make in the hours of the night, but it's not nice.
I've been following this project since before the town meeting that was, where it was approved by the town, and I've been following the questions that I've been hearing, and I'd like to speak in favor of closing the open discussion tonight. It seems to me, while I respect the due diligence that the board has completed, I've been following the incredible stream of information that has been provided by the applicants, and I feel like they've gone above and beyond to meet the expectations of the town. So what I would like to see is that, instead of trying to find roadblocks for this project that the town and every other board in town has approved, I would like to find out ways of making this work, and ideally, making this work tonight. I understand there's issues with the butters, but this is our main street through town, and it is a business district, so while I sympathize with the concerns, that's what's going to go in that, in those areas, this type of development. And I'm very interested in seeing that ugly, unused, unproductive lot put to productive use, and this will be a productive use. This will bring money into the town, it'll provide services where we need them, right in the center of town, and I strongly support this, and I would really like to see the project move forward. I understand we have some significant changes coming up in zoning bylaws that will directly impact this project, so if we don't close this tonight, I would like to hear the explanation and the reasoning for that, plus, how are we going to mitigate that to make this project work? I do not want something completely unrelated to come along at the 12th hour like this that derails this project after the incredible amount of work that this board and the applicants have gone through. So, while I understand there's still some open issues that we're going to resolve in the permitting process, that's great, but I would really like to see this process closed tonight with the information that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Peter?
I agree with Walter. Peter J. Williams, Attorney Mayor Norton, I agree with Walter, because that spot is been abandoned for too long since the bank got demolished, and it is time that we can meet some business to the town of Norton, and this project is going to be good to the town of Norton, and we need more business in the town of Norton, so I'm all for, I'm all for closing the open discussion. I agree with Walter.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? All right, further comments from the board?
The, we had discussed at some meeting in the past, having a control over outside audio that is available inside the store, and I've had personal experience where I was told that it couldn't be handled out there in another situation, so just so you know, that's a condition that I want to make sure is part of any...
So, I mean, I think we've exhausted our questions here, and I think, I think it is time to close these hearings. We'll have to do them one by one. This isn't, I'm not looking to approve or set conditions tonight, I think just closing the public hearings and then coming up with different listed conditions can be at a different meeting. So we have to close the SP 486 site plan and then the special permit?
I move to close the special permit 486, as well as the...
We can do it all together?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the coinciding site plan, and also move to close special permit 491, and the accompanying special permit. That is the special permit, there's no site, site plan, so those two special permits and the site plan.
Is there a third special permit for the sign?
No, it's part of 486.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank, thank you for your patience.
Thanks a lot for all your work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Should we consider voting on the, do we have enough information on the conditions through our peer review and notes and such, or you don't feel comfortable at this point?
I'll leave it to the board, I mean, I think we need to come up with some, I think we need to go through the conditions and take some time with it, but I mean, if the board would like to vote, we can.
I'm not sure that, I'm prepared to vote on the conditions, but I think we owe it all concern, both the applicant and anyone who may have concerns as to whether we're going to approve this or not, and I think we can approve subject to conditions to be drafted and those conditions being voted on, but I'll move that on, on the two special permits, well, let's do, I think, one at a time. I'll move to approve special permit 486, subject to conditions to be drafted and approved at a subsequent meeting.
Second.
A motion is...
May I just ask, does that also include 486, is that the gas station and...
We have to do them individually.
And the electronic message center?
486 would include the message center, yeah. Can we validate that? Is that, I mean, does, the application, it is?
All right, just, the point of information, do we do a separate vote for the site plan?
Yes.
Or does the site do?
There's going to be three.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I've got my tux number on there.
Okay, was there a second there? Did I miss that?
Yes.
Okay. A motion in second to approve special permit 486. Is there any further discussion? Subject to conditions...
Conditions to be further approved and reviewed and approved at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, how's that working? I think it's a challenge to make a decision one way or another, not knowing what the conditions are, seems very subjective.
Well, I hear you, but by the same token, if it's not going to be approved, there's no point in drafting special conditions. So, I mean, if people have heartburn over anything that either should be in a, as a condition, or if they have, you know, real concerns over the project itself, then vote it down, but if, and I'm not reading tea leaves here, but if the board is inclined not to give it the super majority it needs, then drafting conditions are moot, because it's not going to be approved. I'm thinking that we frankly, and we've been kicking this down the, down the road for six months, I think we ought to fish and cut bait, pardon all the euphemisms here, but, you know, approve it or disapprove it, and if it is approved, then place conditions as people feel necessary, but...
But we won't have a chance to agree upon those conditions.
I'm sorry?
We won't have a chance in advance to agree upon those conditions, so if we approve it, and the board doesn't approve all the conditions, then we're...
Then if we don't approve all the conditions, then we're, we've got an approval without conditions that, again, it's all, it's contingent on the passage, the approval of conditions. If we, if we can't agree on conditions, then the approval is moot.
The whole vote is null and void.
Yeah, every concern has been discussed, and every option's been out there, we've talked about many different conditions, so I'm kind of, I'm with Scott and with Joe on this, I'm a little...
I only, I only raised my question because I believe in clarity and cleanliness, and I think to approve something and then argue conditions after the fact, when we could just say, hey, these are the conditions, what do we all think? You know, I have a preference in that manner, but I understand at this point, totally understand.
I don't think we're going to have any problems agreeing on a set of conditions as a board, so, you know, with that assumption, we may want to ask the applicant if he's okay with the vote being taken with that contingency that we'll create the conditions list at a future date.
But is that any different than just doing it all at once?
It's going to be on the agenda in any case.
Yeah.
So, I think I would lean towards you, Scott.
Because I just say if we're going to vote later anyway.
So we're not, I understand your point of moving forward, but at the same point, we're not really kind of, if we feel like we want to look at all the conditions at a separate date, we're not necessarily taking anything off of the future thought process.
I understand, I think I'm just...
Maybe a straw vote of some sort, an informal poll might be a good idea, if we don't feel comfortable taking the full vote on the special permit and site plan review tonight.
I mean, I'm comfortable saying that my take from this board seems that it's leaning to a yes. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth or votes on anybody, but, you know, the more I think about it, I mean, I am more leaning with Scott on this, I think, I think we should know exactly what we're voting on, what we're passing and what we're not passing.
Can I?
But I do think, I do, I'll let you speak one second, I do think that we should have a set of conditions, you know, everybody should bring their conditions ahead of time and so we don't take five hours doing this, because everything's been discussed.
Just from a ducks and roosted point, the conditions we've placed on the, primarily the special permit and site plan for 486, correct?
I think we can, we can create, we can combine into one decision, so, I have to confirm that with counsel, but...
But then there's a separate decision on 491, necessarily, it's really just...
Right.
Putting the tanks and whatever it's...
Right, and deter, a determination that, and by that change that occurred in October is whether or not those underground tanks are safe and do not impact the groundwater or other public health.
Okay.
So that's the primary consideration of that special permit?
Let me, let me just, if it's not obvious, express a certain level of frustration that I have, and I'm not belittling the scope or scale of this project or even its impact, but it's a gas station convenience store. Getting off the subject, but it'll explain where I'm coming from. As you will recall, the town was approached some months ago by Fisher Scientific, Bremer Bio, for a huge biotech operation. My son is in the, is in the industry, and he pointed out to me that what companies like Bremer Bio or anyone else of large scale, they want certainty and they want quickness. This, this, in the grand scheme of things, relatively small project, has gone on for seven, eight months with us. What kind of a signal is that? And now, I just want to close this out, if people don't approve it, that's fine, but I think companies need, again, it's frustrating in that, you know, we're sitting in town hall, it's falling down around our ears, we read about a sports complex that's $8.7 million, God knows where that's going to come from, we need a fire station upgrade, and we can't even decide as planning board members to add to the lowest industrial commercial tax paid of any community around here other than Rehoboth, we can't decide on something this simple. It's frustrating to me that, and look, I'm not looking to prove this with lousy conditions, I mean, I've been, perhaps other than Orrin, as vocal as anyone about certain things I'm concerned with, but what these people, when I say not you, but people in general, they want a yes or no and move on. Now, I'm somewhat pleased that Bremer Bio, yeah, and Fisher Scientific located in Plainville, because they didn't drag their feet about certain things, and, you know, Plainville has gone to the point where they're approving things or giving people answers quickly, and that's what this community has to start to do. Everything has, I feel like we're, we're, you know, 10-year-old kids that, well, I want it, but I don't want to pay for it. Everything comes with traffic, everything comes with noise, our role is to mitigate that as much as possible, or else I say, no, we're going to live with fields that we can't afford, we're going to live with town halls that we can't fix. It's simple, it's really not that complicated, so that's part of my frustration. I think people are deserving of answers, yes or no, and then move on, and that's, again, pardon my frustration.
No, it's okay. So to expedite this, I know that you could put together a montage of saying, we're dragging our feet as a board, we're dragging, I mean, I've said it 100 times in three years, so I, I mean, I do agree with that on that point. That being said, there's a motion and a second on the table.
Can we have further discussion?
We can, we can have limited further discussion, because this is, this is dragging out now.
May, may make a suggestion, why not pull the board as to whether or not someone, whether or not they're willing to approve this, not willing to approve it irrespective of conditions as to a special permit. The special permit is discretionary, and it doesn't necessarily have to have conditions. So, at least if we, if you want to, pull, pull, pull the board as to whether or not the board members are seeking, would deny this irrespective of the conditions, and then, then leave the, if that's not the case, and it gives them the information they need, then the next time we come back, we can talk about conditions, if there is conditions to be had. At least he knows going forward, we're not delaying another month, if in fact, right now, they're sitting on the board, this can't be allowed as a special, special permit, given our discretion, irrespective of conditions, then they, they should know that now, and I would have no objection to pulling, pulling the board to give them that information. But that being said, it wouldn't be approving the special permit, because if everybody here has conditions in mind, we did that once before, and I don't think that's the right way to do it. I think, I think we're here to debate and discuss those conditions, and we have to come to consensus on it, and to say upfront that we've approved it and force our hand in terms of coming up with conditions that we then have already approved, doesn't make much sense to me. So I don't mind bifurcating it, saying, listen, it's a special permit, whether or not there's conditions or not, there may be some of us that would reject it regardless, and they need to know that, but if there's conditions that we can work out, then that's a different, that's a different condition for them to wait on.
So, I'm not going to take a pull of the board right now, because there's a motion and a second on the table, but if anybody would like to speak on that point, then...
One quick comment, if I may?
Sure.
I think we have major process inefficiencies. I think the delay on this is not solely on the board itself, I think there was a bunch
I think the delay on this is not solely on the board itself, I think there was a bunch of continuances that were requested. I think we would go back and count the actual number of meetings that were held on this, not connected to other bylaws. It would actually be interesting to see how much time we actually spent on it. The other part of it is, I think we both had some defects, both within the board. Every one of us could have had a running tally of all the conditions that we've spoken about, so could the applicant or any applicant that comes in front of this board. But yet we sit here, we want to close it, but no one has shown a list of all proposed conditions. I could have done it, I don't have it here, any applicant could. So we sit here and we talk about this, and we run into this continuation that just seems like major process breakdown, and it's going to happen all the time. So, I mean, to Joe's point, I have no problem going and making a decision tonight, just with conditions in mind in the future, but I think we really need to think as a board that we keep getting in these cycles with the public and all these like forums, and we sit here going, we can't make a decision, but there's a lot more at play. And it's very frustrating as a new board member to sit here and just go, it's so simple. If there was a list that we ran every time someone spoke, we could then go through one by one, say, I want it, I don't want it, I want it, I don't want it, we'd be done. You know? So we're going to now take a vote, and we're going to sit through another four, five-hour meeting to go through, hey, what does the list look like? We had every meeting to make that list, but we didn't, so we need to think about that in the future.
Mr. Chairman, as your enforcement officer, I will enforce any special permit conditions moving forward, and they also have to go through another round of permit, and it's going to be signed and checked out by every board member or any town official. So if you choose to vote, you can vote on it tonight, I won't enforce any special order of conditions.
So anyone else on the board want to speak to this?
Is the motion to approve, or what's the motion to approve?
Motion is to approve. So it's motion and a second?
Contingent on conditions.
Okay.
Just a special permit on 486.
Yes, we have to do, there's three of them we have to do.
Okay.
If we can open the discussion, then we're going to discuss the voting on that special permit, that's fine, I'd like to discuss that. We're here for, this is for a special permit, okay? A special permit different from a site plan is applying our discretion. We have a site here that its pumps are within 100 feet of residential dwellings, the underground tanks are within 55 feet of residential dwellings, and 70 feet of the elementary school. The Department of HHS issuing a public health statement stated, living near gasoline fueling stations may increase exposure to benzene. People are advised not to have their families play near fueling stations. Those two issues were echoed by the applicant's own representative.
That's the proposal earlier.
The AM traffic currently, under current existent, current conditions currently backs up between the hours of 7:00 and 8:30 beyond the property line 25% of the time. The building traffic, after it's built, would cause delay projected to increase from 810 to 884 in average vehicle delays in seconds, which is more than 50 seconds, which is basically by itself of left. We just went through a proposed zoning amendment for the village core, in which we acknowledge and agree that there shouldn't be filling stations in this location. My concern is, given the special permit, and basically, when the town puts that on us to issue a special permit, it gives us that discretion, my question to this board is, given those conditions, we're in town, if we're in town, would it not be granted? If we don't grant it here, if we deny it here, we're in town, could we make an argument that it shouldn't be? It's next to a residential, I mean, yes, there are, the other areas that we have in town that has a gas station, the residential is 300 feet away from it. It's not here. We've had articles that said basically they have to be, they should be 300 feet away from residential houses, and certainly from schools. So where, so basically, if you said yes to this, how could you say no to it being almost anywhere else in town?
We have three other gas stations, each one of them is in close proximity to residential.
Each one of them is, the residential is 300 feet or more beyond that.
Speedway has one right, literally, houses a street next door to it. Cumberland Farms has, I forget how many units, over 100 of mobile home units right up against it.
No, it's not. Those stations are 300 feet back.
Cumberland Farms and...
The property line is, but the stations are 300 feet.
It's all stations, the units are right there, right in their backyard.
They're not near any residential homes.
Well, if you don't want to call mobile home units residential homes, that's another, that's another conversation, I don't want to, I don't care who's that, them is that, but each one of them, the MasGas is right next to a house.
The articles that I've seen, and I haven't seen anything, the question that raises a concern, it says basically you shouldn't have children playing near a gas station. And I don't, I'm not going to talk about what we did before, Joe.
Well, you raised it, I'm just saying...
No, no, I'm telling what's now, I don't care what this board did before. I'm here now, okay? As far as I'm concerned, there's residents that live next door to that property, and their concerns, and I didn't know half of the stuff that came out, to tell you the truth, give me one time. And yes, we did take some time, but the time was basically, they were trying to overturn the bylaw that said they couldn't do it to begin with. So don't throw that on us, they had to go to a town, they got to get an amendment, they got their amendment, and then they had basically supply data that none of us had any clue about the specifics of. So to take time and have somebody explain it to us, we should have had a peer review person come in and describe what they were telling us. I don't doubt, I don't doubt what they were saying, and I'm not questioning that, and I don't even, I don't even object to that second special permit, because to tell you the truth, I don't have enough information or knowledge to do that. I'm aware of traffic situations, I'm aware of problems, and I've discovered information that really makes me very nervous about putting these next to, they have residents on two sides of them, and they have an elementary school on the other side. And if, you know, if not there, where would we say no to it? I mean, yes, is the property for this town that needs to be developed, yes it does, okay? But people buy homes and people rely on us, they apply that discretion, and if we don't apply that discretion here, the question for you is, where wouldn't we, where wouldn't we not allow, will we not allow a gas station?
My question and response to that is, if it's on the main road in town, in an industrial area or a commercial area, where would it be better?
But it's a special permit, it's not a private use.
I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate, you're saying where, if we're saying yes there, then where would we say no? I'm saying where would it, where would be better?
In a commercial area, in a commercial zone, not, where there's no, there's no residents on either side of it, okay? Where the residents are far enough away, they're 300 feet away. That's what the standard is, 300 feet away, they're not.
I mean, I agree with Orrin, I have huge concerns about it being next to the school, and the fact that the playground's on that side of the building is a real concern with me. I read all the information that Orrin provided on the benzene and that, and that school area is used 24, you know, 364 days a year, like, it's, houses a summer camp that uses that playground, those kids are out there all day, you know, during the school year. So I do have a very similar concern with Orrin when it comes to that location. I agree it's on a main road, I think that's a plus, but the adjacent use to it is definitely a concern for me, especially when it comes to busing, what the traffic will be like to and from the schools, and the position of that playground in the future, whatever those athletic fields turn into, and that complex is in very close proximity to the site.
All right, anyone else?
Well, I want to reset this, I want to rescind my second on the motion and start over again, just to see a little clarity.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board?
We have a motion on the table, so just...
Well, there's no second, there's no longer a motion.
Okay, so, well, is there a second?
To approve, regardless of conditions?
No, to approve subject to conditions.
To approve and decide conditions later?
Yes. Go on once, go on twice.
What do we, what?
Well, Joe has a motion on the table and...
Joe's second one's withdrawn.
Oh, sorry. So the motion on the table is to approve special permit 486, subject to conditions to be discussed in the future, at a future meeting. Any second?
I already said, I think it'd be cleaner to do it all.
Again, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, lose sleep tonight over...
Yeah.
All right, here are no second, the motion fails. Are there any further motions on these two here? All right, here we go, we're going to move on to special permit 490, 108, South Worcester Street, Wading River Estates.
Were they continued?
No, because we closed the public hearing.
Who else needs to do 491?
No, we closed the public hearing for both.
We closed the public hearing for both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, we did, you're right.
Yeah.
And we've already continued 490 to the last thing.
Oh, 490, I'm sorry, special permit 492, Three Lopes Drive.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board?
I'm sorry, I'm... There's no motion to approve any of these, so we're moving on to Three Lopes Drive.
Do we need to continue?
No, because we, we closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
Yeah.
But there's still a public meeting.
Right. Yeah, we don't have to continue the public hearing.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
But as far as, just so you know, do you know, will it be March 24th, and then maybe, to the member's suggestion of putting together a list of what we've heard for all those conditions, and so then hopefully we can...
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to help, because...
I personally would commit to going through all I know, putting an exhaustive list down, which would probably be too thorough that you won't be happy with, but...
Don't say that, Scott.
I don't want to decide on the date. If you're willing to do the same, it would be very helpful for that efficiency of that meeting, but...
I want to try to add another meeting in here, so, because we're not continuing, we already closed it, we don't have to continue it to a meeting, but...
But just so we know.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be accepting comment at the meeting?
Yeah, there wouldn't be.
But Paul, I think we just let them know when we're talking about it, I guess.
Right, we have, yeah, we're scheduled for two weeks.
We can, we can...
24th.
If we're going to look to add meetings at the end of the agenda today, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
I don't...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If it's about Cumberland Farms, we already closed the public hearing, so we're not taking comments on this, is that what?
So now we should just go to the other meeting.
Right, just go, you're right.
492?
All right, we have special permit 492, Three Lopes Drive, this is the application for the special permit to install the two-sided digital billboard.
I am disappointed, I am, I am appalled, the behavior of this...
I don't have my gavel here, but we're in the middle of a meeting.
That's fine.
Special permit 492, do we have the applicant here?
Senator, moderator.
Mr. Carroll is here. Thank you for your patience.
So, I have to present?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. John Carroll, Carroll Advertising, Bob Miss here from Daktronics. We were in front of you guys probably about six, seven months ago, I don't know the exact time, at which time the board voted to support us at the town meeting, and at the town meeting, the article passed, and so we are back in front of you to propose the location that was actually the one that was presented in the potential location, presentation, the first time around. I've got some, the applications, or, it should be, with all you guys, you should have it, but I've got some mockups of what the north and south face might look like. It's not exact, but it'll give you an idea. That's what they're quoting, so, thank you. Thanks, Scott.
That's for you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I was hanging off the edge there.
No, that's my...
Thanks.
So, just to kind of backtrack a little bit, we, the first, we approached the town in 2015, and there was, there were some concerns about the light emissions, that we really didn't have answers to at the time. And then fast forward to six or seven months ago, when we came before the town again, we met with the town with a mitigation proposal, and in answers to these emission questions, prior to the meeting that we had with the board, there was a public hearing to get some of the town folks' feedback, so I believe we were successfully able to address any of the concerns, and Bob did a great job with his light analysis from the Daktronics engineers. So originally, this was a proposed location that wasn't firm, now this is a firm location. We have gone to the ZBA to ask for a waiver or relief on the setback, so that we could move the structure as close to 495 as possible, that was granted last Wednesday, I believe. Other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape, and happy to answer any questions, and hopefully everything's in order for you guys, and just as a little aside, one of the mitigation components to the town is content, in addition to a cash payment, is content on the, on the display. So as I'm driving to the meeting, I saw one of the MasDOT related to the coronavirus, so right off the bat, I'm thinking, okay, that's a great public health, a public service to the town, too, so, so there's substantial mitigation to the town, and hopefully we've done all our homework, addressed all the concerns of the town folks, and again, as I said, it was, it was approved at the town meeting, and hopefully the board will support us tonight. Happy to answer any questions. I'll actually turn it over to Bob.
If you want to take a peek at this, I'll just kind of go over what this is and kind of what that graph really means. This is a Google satellite image of the actual location, like John said, that's the permanent As you can see, it's 495 Google map, the circle is actually, or if you look closely, right down in the center, those are the two billboard faces for the north and the south bound. Did you, does everyone have one, did you need one?
We do not.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, that, okay, great.
I get a couple extra.
Just one, we'll be fine.
Thanks. So if you look closely down at the blue...
They got enough copies.
Okay, good. Those are basically the two faces at point north and southbound traffic, and then the circle, actually, if you look closely at it, it goes out to 750 feet from the billboard face, and straight off of it, zero degrees is basically straight, looking straight at the billboard face, and then it kind of does a circle out to 75 degrees. Now with the, in the yellow, that's actually a foot candle reading of absolute worst conditions in the darkness of night. So it kind of just gives you an idea of, the display has a photocell that automatically dims it, so as it gets dark, the display will dim down substantially to about 3% of what it is on bright center, and that happens completely automatically, the photocell will automatically adjust it down to 3%. And those foot candle readings are based on if you had an all-white background on, which you never could, so it's absolute worst conditions. We use these a lot just to kind of show, there's really nothing in the affected area that could even have a potential to see it. To give an example, you know, .02, .03 foot candles is barely, you can barely even see that from 750... see that from 750 feet away. And then it, it substantially drops off as you go out to the sides. So, we've designed the products, one to have the photocell, but it also, the LEDs are very directional, so it's targeting the audience on 495.
The V factor, too.
And then that V, we can actually open that up a little bit to target that light away from some of the area behind it, if need be.
This, uh, this, uh, visual that Bob has given you guys, is based on a back-to-back structure, so it's not gonna be back-to-back, it'll be Ved favorable to the, to the, to the, to the roadway, which, which, which only opens up the backside piece of the pie even more.
No, it's actually my, gonna be my question.
Yeah, so it'll even be, it'll even be less than what you see there.
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about these land use in this area?
Bob, if you, if you want, the image is on the TV screen, if that, if that helps.
Okay, yeah, exactly, okay. So, and what, and what you have here for the visual is, is it based on it being back-to-back? So, it's, it would, that, that, that open pie space at the back would be wider, in other words.
What are you, what are you proposing, and how wide can you make it?
Well, well, what, I guess what I'm saying is, that's based on a back-to-back, because it's gonna be a V, so you can cut, so it's, it's less, it's less, it's even less invasive than what it's, what, what that shows. What we actually build will have less...
How, how big of an angle could you make it so it just focuses on 495 and doesn't...
That's what we're doing, that's...
But what is that?
I believe it's about 20-foot.
20-foot.
And so, that 20-foot V?
The 20-foot would be on the open end.
Could you, would you provide us with a schematic of what that's gonna?
Yeah, it's right there on...
No, no.
An updated light map, you say?
Yeah.
Light analysis with, I mean, right now, it is opened up a little bit, John, it's not, but I, I mean, this would open up even more.
Yeah, it would open up even more, so I guess what I'm saying is that...
But does it need to be, this is showing, basically, there is nothing being affected by it anyways.
So, so this, this graphic here is not with the 20-foot V?
No, it's, would it be, it's, it's shown as a back-to-back structure.
Okay.
So, open it up a little bit...
It's not back-to-back on this.
Yeah.
It's not?
No, because you have different radii, different arcs on the arch.
Okay.
But we can open that up, that's to be determined.
I would think you'd want the zero degrees to face each, between the traffic.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Which will actually open, like John said, that will open that up. But in the event, like I said, out to 750 feet, you're almost neglectable light, at those angles especially, there's really nothing in that cone. These are all businesses. I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna, so I'm assuming this isn't in, like, a, a, a commercial lot? Like, are all these buildings within, let's say, the current radii? Are, are any of these residential?
Well, the, it's funny, one of the other requests from the ZBA last week was, the gentleman that owns the property on the commercially zoned lot has a pre-existing non-conforming residence. So, we, we asked for relief, that the, the bylaw states, rather than residential property, it's residence.
Right.
So, so that's, so...
Like a house?
A house.
Right.
So, and he's the, he's, he's the applicant, too, he's the co-applicant, he's the owner of the property, so, so that was an unintended, uh, we didn't realize that, because it's, it's commercially zoned.
I'm assuming, like, this is the house? I'm sorry, this is the house?
Yeah, look at the O1 there.
Right, yeah, right here, yeah, this is, this is the home in question.
Yes, yes. And, and we were granted the relief.
Okay, so that, that, ZBA gave that as well?
ZBA, ZBA gave us that as well.
Okay.
So, those were the two, the two asks.
Okay.
Just, we talked about you can open it wide, I assume you've done calculations in terms of what the ideal angle of that opening would be for the, for the roadway itself?
Right. It's not anything scientific?
I'm not so much looking for the capability, I'm looking for what degree, is it, right now, the radii that you have here goes out 75 degrees, 60?
Correct.
Where is that gonna, I'm not going to hold you to 62 versus 63, but from a, like, where, where roughly is that cone gonna start, do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, if we were to bring the zeros, if you look at the zeros, they're actually in the tree?
Yeah.
Trees? If we were to bring that zero, let's say on this side, this zero could almost go out to here, right, John?
Yeah, yeah, that is...
This is the northbound.
The road bends.
So, if we, we can almost go 20 degrees doing that.
On the right side?
Yeah, that was my question.
Pretty much both sides.
Okay, so you're gonna, so you're gonna go into...
75 would be out with a 60.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean? That's about your 15 degrees, a little bit more.
That's what I was looking for.
If we were to open that up there.
Okay.
That's all based on that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so you're saying to this 20 degrees or to this?
Basically, the...
No, what he's saying is, see this V right here?
Yeah.
If we were to move this zero?
Yeah.
More so, it's pointing directly at the traffic that it's intended for?
Mm-hmm.
That would move this that much more this way. Now, if we did it on, yeah, on this side here, to the other side of the highway, we'd almost move it 20 degrees. So, you can almost move this line to here, that's what he was asking. Do you see what I'm saying? By opening up, what he's saying, yeah?
Okay.
And that's just something to be...
What is the property on the other side of 495? What is that zone, do you know?
Um, I, I...
Like, the park, estate park.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't.
It's R80.
R80?
Yes.
Any development there? Any development on that side?
You would have housing intermittent here? It's not heavily developed, but there's a possibility that in that, this area, there would be residences.
Yep, this is Lopes Drive, this is, um, this is...
So, is there, is there, there's none there now?
Um, let me pull up, uh, let me pull up an aerial before it's...
Right. Any noise emitted from the billboard? Okay.
And with the, our next step beyond the town would be to the state, and we have to go through the whole process again with the butter notifications within 500 feet, but from, from, from an applicant's standpoint, it couldn't get any better, because essentially, they'll only, I think we only have one, one a butter.
Can sell?
No, well, the paradigm, the paradigm.
How far are you from 495?
Um, I believe it's 60 feet, there's a, there's a 60-feet, um, land buffer between, approximately.
If that first radii, first diameter is 250 and 60 feet of R8.
Yeah, you're right. And this is very accurate, this is the scale.
Yeah, and there was, there's some, there's actually something in the application packet that would, that has a scale that shows it's not color, and that's, gives you a pretty, pretty good example of the, of the distance, yeah.
This guy is actually this way.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, this...
I've, I've got the aerial up now. It doesn't look like there's anything on the other side of the highway.
No.
But if it's not reading, it could be here, but...
Well, yeah, it, it could.
But if it's, if it's built, it might be all wet.
There's a lot of wet in there, I don't see any, any roads in this area.
So, not soon. It is all wet, there's a lot of water down there, so, yeah.
Paul, you, you included in the package a proposed site plan, is that the actual site plan that's on record?
That was a site plan approved about 10 years ago, I just knew that it existed, I just wanted to make sure you, you knew that and had a chance if you wanted to look at it. I don't think this has any impact on it, but I felt it was important to let it know.
It has, has parking in that corner? Are they gonna be doing away with that parking, or are they gonna change that parking?
Actually, as a result of this process, the, it was determined that some of these, some of this has gone a little bit over the, over the property line, so he's actually gonna be moving them, moving them back in, away from the road.
But, but your, your pole itself, is that gonna be taking up any of these spaces?
No, no, it's, it's a clear area right in that corner, right in that corner.
Okay, are there any guidelines for, I know with, with cellular towers, there's issues with being a certain distance away in terms of being, if it were to fall over, is there anything, any guidelines in the state or anything else relative to the ability of that, and any dangers with falling over, guidelines, guide wires, or things that have to be not within that radius of the tower?
No, there's really nothing that, that, that comes to mind, that I've ever had to, you know, deal with in the past.
How tall would it be?
70 feet.
This already went through town meeting, this is a whole support article. No.
Well, yeah.
But in, in theory, if it fell over, it could get close to the roadway? If it fell in the worst possible direction, but in theory...
Yeah, yeah, it would, yeah, in theory, if it fell over, it, it likely wouldn't land on 495, it might be right at the edge of 495, because that 60 feet is even, just, it's just that little piece of land that, that comes around.
Yeah.
Like, the, the, the avater's parcel, it actually, it actually veers off and comes around in front of this gentleman's parcel.
It's considered a manned tower, though, isn't it? Because you have a walkway on it? So, I'm sure there's pretty stringent codes and regulations on what the requirement for loading and wind loads is on that, so I'd be very surprised if that goes through, any kind of...
Yeah, I know this. In fact, the, the standards have gotten more stringent, and the installer has even gone to the point where he wants to use, use, you know, look at other engineers that, that, because it's, everything's overkill, the foundation is three times bigger than it needs to be, everything is overkill.
Is that licensed by the state in terms of the requirements?
Oh, yeah.
So, the state will mandate what you, what you can put up, and I hate to put it up?
Well, the, the town would, the town, the town building inspector would have to approve the plans, and, but, beyond that, I don't know.
There's a whole set of state guidelines you have to follow over.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the type of, like, operation and maintenance would you guys do on a, on a facility like this?
Well, we have, we have content manager that handles all that, and in the event that there's, say, an amber alert, there would be an automatic override, Bob will speak to that.
Did you mean, like, physical?
Well, that, too, like, you know, anything that you, you know, how often would you come out, are you gonna check the, you know?
Yeah, well, it's as needed.
Yeah.
As hopefully never.
Yeah, not, not a lot.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
And in the event they need service, the guy gets up on the catwalk and services it.
Right, to Scott's point, because it's, yeah.
Doesn't choose.
Yeah, but I can, I can understand you have a content manager as well, they don't have to get up in, like, a physical billboard, change out the sign every two weeks, you're doing that from a computer in a nice warm room, so...
That's right. Yeah, all the content's uploaded to the display over the, basically, web-based system. And like John was saying, Norton would get, how much space does the state have?
Matching, matching.
So, much time where Norton would get a community message to put up there. Mass DOT requires the public safety messaging in the event of, of an emergency. They are tied into the amber, the national amber alert system, where, you know, in cooperation with John as the owner, if, God forbid, there ever was one in the area, it would actually automatically take over the billboard with the amber alert that was, you know, implemented, just like we see on our phones and hear on the radio, that would go up on the billboard.
Will the tower, sorry, no good. Will the tower and billboard be used for any other services? Antennas, cameras, things like that, or only the digital billboard?
Initially, only the digital billboard. There was one discussion that we had preliminarily with the town about the possibility of putting a repeater if there was some communication issues. I, I did that in the, in the town of Sharon, where the town had a poor signal on that, that side of the town, so we worked with the town to, to put a repeater on there.
It was for their fire department?
Yeah, for their fire department.
Because it's nice and high, it gives you a location.
But, but that's, but, but there's nothing proposed, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that there'll never be, maybe a small cell, like, if there's a, a, a company that's with the 5G rolling out and the technology changing so quickly all the time, that there might be, that, there, there may be, and, and we probably have to apply for that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, Paul, how does it typically work with a site permit if there was other real estate to go on with the special permit?
We just did that with the...
Would that require a revisit or refiling, or how does that work?
Cell phones have their own set of rules.
Yeah, cell phones have a very, yeah, there's a federal law that mandated, or that makes it, it takes a, it... But any modifications to this plan, as it's tied to a special permit, would require a new permit to be assessed?
A new permit.
Any changes to this would require a new permit? Well, it'd still be subject to any, well, you don't amend a special permit, you would, you would have to refile the special permit. You can amend a site, a site plan, but not, under state law, doesn't allow for amending special permits. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's not true. Can't extend them if they're, if they've expired, my mistake, you can amend it.
Does the, the triangle that's to the, between their property and 495, is that part of the property to the right? Looks like it?
Yes, that's what I was saying, is that, that piece there?
Yeah.
Is theirs.
This, or in this fold-out one?
Yeah.
It's actually oriented this way, so the property with the warehouse comes around in front, and the billboard's actually here.
It is...
Or, just looking at the, at 4 Lopes, that the owner is still, Mr. Watkis?
Make this.
Make this out, that he is the same owner for 3 and 4, he, he was the applicant for the Lopes Drive subdivision.
So, he, he does own this property, has he been, is he aware of this?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Is he?
Registered mail, about a notification, no.
Okay, two things, have you finalized your agreement with the town?
Yes.
And can you give me an idea of what we're talking about for the cost of decommissioning this tower?
Yeah, I think I spoke to the building inspector, $15,000, I think.
Do you have something?
15 to 20, I did, I did submit to the building inspector.
Could you submit that to us as well?
Yes, I can.
And that's in today's dollars?
That's in today's dollars.
Okay, and are you leasing this property?
I'll be owning and managing.
No, okay, so you're, you're not...
I'm, I'm purchasing a permanent easement.
Permanent easement?
Yes, sir.
What's the useful life of these towers?
Well, the steel lasts a pretty long time, but, but the digital faces, they, you know, they, they, they stand behind them for 10 years, hopefully, that'll go a little longer, but the technology changes so rapidly, so I'm counting on 10 to 15 years of amortization on it.
So, at some point, if you would stop utilizing that, you just had the tower, you would be prepared to decommission and take it down?
No, I would put a brand-new faces up on it.
Okay.
I have no intention of decommissioning that, that structure, ever.
Has Carroll Advertising have any other of these billboards along 495?
Uh, no.
You're aware of any others on 495?
Well, you, you know, it's funny, because that came up the last time we met, and as, as I was driving, I, I was thinking about your question, and, 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 and I, I actually did a Google Earth, and essentially, it's 90% wooded, so, so there's really no appropriate places on the majority of 495, it's, it's substantially wooded, and you have to have, for the state, forget the town, for the state, you need a commercial industrial zone and two businesses, so a lot of that area wouldn't even comply.
Are you not aware of any of the ones on 495?
There's, in Lowell, there's a couple, there's one that just went up-down in Wareham, I believe.
Right, that's on, yeah, 25, at the end of 495.
Yes, sir.
And you, you mentioned, Julie asked about maintenance, replacing the lights, and that's not on an ongoing basis?
As needed, as needed, uh, thank goodness, I mean, the, the Daktronics product is a little bit more expensive than, than some of the other competitors, but having been involved in the pilot program, right out of the gate with the state, we were one of the first, we actually had the first digital deployment under the pilot program with the state about 13 or 14 years ago, and it was a Daktronics product. So, I have a track record with the company, anything I buy right now is with Daktronics, it's a little bit more money, but they, they stand behind the product, if there's an issue, their texts are right out there, and, and they actually notify you before you even If there's an issue, their texts are right out there and they actually notify you before you even know. You'll get an email saying, you know, troubleshoot and we're on it, basically. So they're.
And I guess to answer your question, Fred, we're not out there daily or weekly servicing it. We've gone a year without actually having to go to the billboard, you know? And if, in the event it needs service, the guy's out there for a short period of time changing out a panel. They're not light bulbs, they're actually LED. There's no lights, you know, like the static billboards have lights on them. Actually incandescent light bulbs that shine up on them. Those are the parts we're servicing.
Now, this is a water resource protection district. How far down do your, do your structures go and how do you?
Well, I believe we have this slated for a spread foundation. So I'd have to see, it's probably on the plan, Paul, what's shown with the footage is there. So I would say just spitballing it, probably six or eight feet down. And you know, 10 by 20, thereabouts. It depends on the soil conditions and the higher the groundwater, then obviously we have to spread the foundation a little bit wider.
Yeah, it's just have the elevation of the foundation on it.
And what is it that goes down there? Is this there for down below?
Yeah, it's not on the drawings that we got here.
And the proposed height is 70 feet to the top of the billboard?
Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, there was a, I don't think I was imagining this. There's an annual payment to the town?
It's a lump sum payment.
Okay, and how much was that?
Anyone else?
Kind of have any further questions?
Yeah, there's also content.
Community investing is technically a state, right?
Yeah, we have, we have both state and local content figured into it, so it's matching. The town will get the same amount of time for their messaging as the state does every month.
Yes, so it's ongoing service, not necessarily a payment?
No, it's, well, there's a payment and the ongoing.
The ongoing is a service rather than a.
Yes, sir.
Community service, Mass DOT.
Is it $300,000 of payment, lieu of taxes, or is there?
Well, I don't know how you guys handle that on your end, but it was, you know, it was just, that was the way it was written. We didn't, you know, it wasn't written payment and lieu of taxes. So I believe there'll be probably, and the way that the municipalities have taxed it is personal property.
Right.
So there probably will be a tax component to that as well.
Anything further, guys?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for 92.
Just hold your motion. I just want to make sure if there's anyone in the audience that would like to say anything or have any questions. Okay, I'm sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
I just had one observation to make before.
Yeah, you can still comment after my motion anyway.
Okay.
The observation I had was that this depicted 50-foot height and your drawing shows 70 feet. So I was just curious on what's the translated property and like that a 50% increase in height?
It's 50 feet to the bottom versus 70 feet to the top. It's 14-foot tall, so it's.
So be comparable to saying all of this stuff stretches out 50% as well, right?
Well, what he's saying is that it's 50 feet to the base of the structure, so that's probably what they use for their.
Right.
This is 50 feet to the bottom.
Yeah, there's a little apron and then there's 14, so it's about 17 feet of.
And then the actual angle of attack between those two panels will be defined on install?
No, we've got, we've got, we've got to make that determination prior to buying the steel, so we've got a 20-foot V.
Okay, but the angle isn't identified.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Like how you would pivot these.
But you can rest assured that it won't be pointed anywhere near.
No, I understand. Just a few observations. I had a question on so, okay.
It's targeted for traffic on 495.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
We didn't notice the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We didn't notice the people across 495?
It wouldn't be.
There's nothing there. We.
300 feet?
It's the notice which allows the properties abutting up to 300 feet, so.
Who owns this land? God knows.
Right. Right, we have the abutters list, but it was certified by the assessor that it's a 300-foot. It doesn't look like it would cross.
Okay, my only concern.
It doesn't have the list if you.
I understand.
It's in the application.
I didn't send the need to move this forward. My only concern was having no abutters that are contesting it, some of the people that could have a question and going to our, our requirement is knowing it's in harmony and suitable with the surrounding areas. I would just be concerned if any of the abutters had an issue with this, I'd like to know about it. Obviously, the people that have been noticed have none and certainly the residents that designed it isn't an issue, so I don't have a problem with that. My only concern was, you know, if there's somebody across the way that would have a real issue with something like that, I don't know that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to hear about that, but that would be my only note. The other thing that I'd like to see is that I think the bylaw contemplates a decommissioning provision and a surety. I think we need to get some information on what they have for the decommissioning and that should be part of any order we have or any special permit we issue.
Kevin, your, your motion was to.
Yes, to approve special permit.
We have to, we have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close public hearing.
I like your thinking, though.
Forward progress.
I second.
See, Joe, we're taking your comments to heart.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second to close special permit 492, the public hearing for special permit 492. Any further discussion?
Yeah, when we get the decommissioning information, I think we, I think the bylaw contemplates, I think it's a surety for the decommissioning and I'd like to see something as to what that costs, making sure it comes down.
It's in the town's hands right now. It's been sent. I should have included it in the package, but it was just a request by the building commissioner, which I complied with and he hasn't. And I believe it was about $15,000, $18,000.
You would have no problem with us putting a condition or requiring a surety bond for its removal?
No problem. I anticipated it.
And with that, we would probably contemplate something on an add-on basis as per.
Whatever the town determines is fair, I'm sure it's going to be reasonable.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, folks? All right, all in favor of closing public hearing for SP 492?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Any other motions on the table?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for 92.
Second. Just getting that. I'll take it. Jim can have the next one.
Motion approved. Now, is this going to be one with subject to conditions or do you want to discuss conditions now?
That was my motion. So we can vote on it as is or if somebody wants to amend it, that's fine with me.
There's a motion and a second, so.
To approve.
Are we, okay, so without conditions? Is that the motion? Is it stands now?
It stands now. Yeah, it stands now, yes, yeah.
No, I think we need to review the conditions. I think at least two things that have been identified. I'd like to know the spread and I'd like to make sure we can include the conditions relative to decommissioning. And, oh, sorry, and also maintenance.
Well, that's part of our standard conditions anyways, isn't it, the operation maintenance plan? Well, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, in the interest of trying to move this forward, I guess from the spread condition notes, I would, let me see, do, 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 be comfortable with the condition that the light coming up, that the spread coming off the billboard is at minimum 15 degrees, which is what's depicted on the plan that you have here. Or 15 degrees from center on either side? Because you have 75 on either side. Is that, so that would be meaning that what's depicted in front of us would be the smallest opening?
Correct. No, no less than 20-foot, do you want to use the degrees instead?
The degrees are what's on the plan.
So no less than what's on the plan?
Right.
Well, this is, this is the light emission plan, but the structural plan shows 20 feet. So whichever one you would prefer.
And then in terms of the decommissioning and surety, say that decommissioning plan and appropriate surety to be determined by town staff? Is that, are you comfortable with that, Orin?
Chris, Chris was here.
I think it needs to come back to us because it is basically, it says surety.
They've already submitted the decommissioning plan, so it's a matter of just.
Okay.
That's my feeling. If they've submitted it, it's a matter of Chris and Paul saying, yes, this makes sense and then taking care of the surety bond. Is that?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'm concerned about, I think some definition of decommissioning. So if that billboard is down for a year, they can't come back after that. At some point, who determines what's decommissioned? So I think that's something, I don't know that they're ready to do. I think we need to do it as we've done it with, when we're dealing with the bogs, we talked about the timing, I think it was with the bogs. Some timing as to if they stop using that sign, I mean, we've got billboard, one billboard that they're now, that's not being maintained.
It's so overgrown, you can't see it.
Yeah, it's overgrown. It looks stupid.
They're only advertising themselves. He's making money off of it.
No, but you know, at some point when he's not, I mean, that, if he's making money, he's going to do it. I agree. But if he's not, if there's no sign up there for whatever reason and they stop using it, they stop doing something else, it's gone to Florida, I don't, I don't know. But at some point, that's something that I don't think should be sitting there without being utilized. I'm not particularly, I don't think it really belongs to myself, but that's something else I'm ready to sign off on that. But certainly if it's not being utilized and not being utilized effectively and efficiently. And I'm open for the time period. I'm not saying, you know, let them tell us at some point if it's not being used for what? Certain number of, half a year, for a year.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, public hearings are sort of a close.
Okay.
The state has abandonment language in the, in their language. Permits abandoned and whatnot, so I think you'd be protected in that state's language.
All right, so let's try to focus this into an amended motion perhaps, Tim?
Kevin, would you accept those?
Uh, yes, sure.
Let's go through the amendments real quick so we make sure we have them correct. No, for Nicole.
Please.
You want to start over and make your own?
I can motion, I can restate them. The spread opening of the billboard shall not be less than 30, a total of 15 degrees away from center on either side.
I think you'd be better off identifying the zero angle of each face where you want it to be, because otherwise it's relative to north or south.
Relative to the zero angle of the billboard.
So see the zero angle on there? Dead center? That's the panel coming straight out.
Yeah.
Why aren't you setting the condition where you want that to be, that you don't want it to exceed more than 50 feet off the edge of the road? 200 feet up. So you're setting that middle line, right on the edge of the road.
Why don't we use this as reference and say that the spread shall be reflective of the plan dated 1/24/2019?
Because I don't think that's.
Yeah, because the angle's going to be further out, so I would say not, because you don't want it smaller, is the goal. So I would say not smaller than what's depicted in this.
Perfect, yeah, that's fine.
There's no math at all.
It's only going to get better.
This here though.
Right, it's only going to get better, yeah, right. That's my thing.
Not to be any narrower.
Narrower.
Any narrower than what's depicted, okay.
Just call that the light analysis plan dated.
1/24/2019.
I thought you were trying to spread that out.
He wants it no smaller than what's on there.
So when it spreads out, it'll have a less impact on the surrounding properties?
Right.
So this, I'm setting this as a worst case. So it'll only get better.
Okay, but we don't want to find anything better than what they have there.
Well, this here, I mean, to me it's acceptable, but I mean, it's going to be better than what's on there. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, if, yeah.
Okay, so that's the amendment. Got that?
Was that decommissioning plan will be approved by the building commissioner and town planner and appropriate surety bond set up accordingly.
I would add to that according to the.
Part of the bylaw.
Yeah, the Mass Guidelines on Decommissioning. Massachusetts.
State guidelines.
State guidelines.
So those would be the two. I was amending your motion, not making my own. So it still stands?
You're good with that, Kevin?
Julie, it's your third.
Yes, my second stands.
Second still stands, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we'll start draft it this week and get that to you. Now we have. Yes, meetings. We're almost done, guys. What are we thinking about potential additional meeting?
So are you looking for meetings?
What are you thinking here?
So you're looking at late March, early April? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, March and April.
All right, well, the 31st is going to work if we're having that meeting.
Yeah, we're trying to schedule a, the info session for the village center and the marijuana bylaw with the public on the 31st. That's based on Julie's availability. We're trying to have that meeting before your April 7th.
I think we're going to end up non-Thursdays because I think the 14th of April vacation week, or is it 20?
21st is April vacation week, so I will not be here that.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here either.
We already have a meeting. I don't know if we don't.
28th is the meeting. What about the 14th? And the whole goal is so that we're not here for five hours again.
That the venue is five hours? Did that happen?
No, not tonight, but that happened last year.
What's planned for that meeting?
What's that?
What are you planning for that meeting? Just a.
Bylaw review. There's just so much packed into all of these meetings that we're trying to spread it out a little more.
Yeah, hopefully.
We also have to discuss marijuana.
My suggestion is to try to keep the April, the two April meetings as much as possible focused on the bylaw, at least the first, well, yeah, and, you know, realizing that we have, the industrial development commission has asked to come back before April 7th so they can just do a preview of the marijuana bylaw that they had started a while back, just so you don't see it for the first time on April 7th.
So they would be our next meeting.
Yeah, so then, okay, so we got the 24th.
So adding the 14th would basically be all the stuff that we don't get to on the 7th, that we don't expect that we get to on the 7th.
And all the continuations, the continuances kind of backed everything up, so we were. I don't want to get into a situation like we did last year where, you know, cramming the night before the town meeting and passing things.
We are not.
No, we are not.
That's April 14th?
Yeah.
That's not vacation week, is it?
No, the following week is.
I floated that as a trial, as a, already Julie shot, Julie.
Yeah, I can't be here the 21st. The 14th I can do, so.
So we have now April 7th?
14th and 28th.
April 7th is already set and I should announce those, the 7th and the 28th is already scheduled for the library. Especially because with the bylaw changes, we expect a bigger crowd, so.
Oh, yeah, we already got that on the calendar.
We're trying to get out of here for, until whenever that, the chamber is resolved, but, so those are set. We'll work on new locations if possible, although everybody's scrambling, so meeting spaces really at a premium now.
Well, this is, this is a logical spot for us to have our alternate 14th.
Love that place.
Yeah. It's right outside his office, yeah.
So we're looking to add the 14th? Yeah, so everybody's okay with the 14th?
Is that going to be the library also? Is that going to be?
We don't know. We'll try. We'll try to get it there, but the libraries, you know, they're heavily programmed and now. know, they, they're heavily programmed, and now other boards and commissions will be meeting there as well, so, but we'll, you know, try to, we'll get with the library in the next couple of days to get that set, or we'll find a spot, preferably not here, especially as we expect larger crowds.
Our next meeting is on the twenty-fourth of March, right?
Yes. Tentatively scheduled for here, but we'll.
Will we be taking up the decision on Cumberland Farms at that point, or?
More than likely.
Which one?
The twenty-fourth.
The next one, right?
So we'd have marijuana, Cumberland Farms, and Condyne?
Yeah. Well, and if we come to the meeting and it's going to be a two-hour discussion, and, you know, we'll push it, but.
I think.
Tentatively, we'll just try to make that decision.
I think you'd comment on us to by the middle of next week, not to hold us to our week before the meeting thing, our own meeting thing, but that if we have any specific conditions, we would want as part of the Cumberland Farms decision that we have with Paul to make, and so that way we have one, so that way you can take the standard conditions as well as anything that's sent to you.
And I've started drafting that decision.
And we have your list, and we can look at the list instead of.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree.
And take, Chesley, can, well, obviously take his conditions as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, he wrote those up on his.
Yeah.
Is everybody going to be able to make that meeting?
On that twenty-fourth?
Do we have to post that as part of our agenda?
Yes, it'd be part of the agenda.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a public hearing.
But it's just.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda.
We'll have it something like, I can't remember the word, it's like discussion on, post-public hearing.
Discussion and possible vote, it's always good to put.
Yeah, right.
Especially if we know we're going to be voting, so, and we'll be transparent with that.
Right, well, we have, I just can't think of it right now, but we've had that in the past, so we'll just go back to that.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain one last motion for the night. So moved. He's a Jedi.
I'll second.
There's a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.